All right, so let's call the order the February sixth twenty twenty four work session of the Lord's South retention board of supervisors, please join me. Brings us to our first item on the agenda, which is a public comment period. Is there anyone wishing to be recognized? Thanks. Well, moving right along then, Public Works Director, Mr. Jones.
Morning, thank you. I just got updated on some projects. Tree light upgrades, uh, probably we're still waiting for two fixtures coming to get the final eight installed, so. Believe it. Couple of weeks, approximately figures will have that. Uh, public works and community center facility, uh, been gone back and forth on a number of provisions on the community center property. The idea was suggested that we split into building library being in a separate building. And all the other uses in it. In another building, uh, it helps solve the grading issue that we were having struggling with. Um, and also might provide some, uh, some benefits for phasing the project and moving some other things along. You know, from the our global perspective on these projects. Uh, so we reviewed their, uh, the team's concept. A couple of weeks ago and had some concerns, some questions and suggestions, so. They are further revised that that concept and are we're meeting later this morning to follow that. Taking progress. Extreme sidewalk project. Coordinating with the property owners, uh, for the side relocations that smiled, Racus and Kent Harvest and. Also working on scheduling meeting with Smile regarding their, uh, their participation in the project. Uh, total road improvements, uh, working with the property owner twenty four ten old forty foot road. Uh, we're going to the drainage concerns and the issues with that project, so we're. Working to try to work through that at this point and if you'll recall, that's part of the grant that we received for the from the. Dirt gravel, low volume growth program through the Montgomery County Conservation District. Uh, garage rental for Public Works and golf course will come to a tentative agreement with the property owner for. The rental of a Ford Bay approximately four thousand square foot garage. It should be shared use between the public works and the golf course. For our storage needs, it's a eight oh four Harleysville Pike. The, uh, the rental fee, monthly rental fee is seventeen to one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, about seven thousand. So, uh, that cost would be shared with the, the golf course. So we're looking forward to the Lord's blessing when that is something that you're.
What's the term of the lease?
Haven't seen any of the details yet, they're, uh. The owner's attorney is supposedly working up an agreement. Uh, that's supposed to be done last week, uh, I have to reach out again and see. And it's, we're, we were hoping March, but it's going to be most likely April by the time we could even occupy. Garage is just full of things that have been collected over the years.
They had a, uh, garage sale.
Did they?
The weekend.
Okay.
Lots of tables, so it may be dwindling. It looks like they have a long way to go, Howard.
Yeah, I guess they had entertained having an auctioneer come in and, and but didn't want to pay the.
Fee.
The fee, but. The problem with something like that is that everything's got sentimental value to someone or that, you know, it's all attached to a memory. And it's difficult to say, yeah, in the dumpster.
Is it, is the building separately metered from the house?
They're gonna work on that as well.
Okay.
It's having a, a separate meter for. Or electric.
God, I feel if you think it's the best move to go or the most helpful, then I don't really have a problem with it, but that said, I still wanna take a look at the, you know, once the fine transfer.
Yeah.
Well, it is, how like, are they defining an area of the property along with the garage like, you know, obviously the access comes off of the one side, is it? Are they throwing through garages? I'm trying to remember. So we obviously don't have full fledged access to the property, so. This is like a defined area that's gonna be.
They were talking stone area.
Oh, they do. I just wanna make sure that along with the building, we have a defined like we're entitled to X so that we don't get into some sort of like you damaged our property that wasn't at least that type of thing. Yeah.
Since we're talking about that area right there. There's a, a drainage pipe that goes underneath slosher road like right past this, uh, garage. That the edge of the road is starting to come in, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make sure you're aware.
Check the box. Set for salvage. Project Franconia.
Don't tell me we're gonna get to use some of those.
Those there. Yeah, that was the plan. Want to get that done this year, so widen that, make it safe and then redo the road and improve the drainage.
Go and make sure you're aware of it.
Yeah.
I saw it this morning.
Yeah, that's been on the radar for, for a couple of years trying to, trying to find a use for these, uh, these old boxes over. One, one area, the other area is the, uh, Indian Creek Road just past Freeman School, where we've got a. Forward that runs under the road there that's, you know, way too small. That area always floods, so. Uh, yeah, we're, we're trying to find spots, find homes for these things, but they've been sitting in the stone yard for probably a decade at least.
Or leave. Recur concrete, so.
Contracts on your, uh, agenda, there's authorization advertised two contracts. Twenty twenty four base repair contract and the twenty twenty four pavement markings contract versus the joint contract with Franconia Township. Uh, we also received a letter from Earth Res. Regarding the Harley's Aquari, Harley's own material. And their application to renew their, uh, air quality permit for the state, so I'm looking into the details on that. Can't imagine there's much change in that, but, uh, hopefully you get that as well.
So I have a comment on that, on the quarry. I have a couple of trucks running out of there right now. And. Their wash station, when you're supposed to wash the tire wash. They said it basically just pumping mud right now. It makes the truck dirtier.
Really?
Yeah, and I don't know if there's any way, I think that water is supposed to be reused, like they reuse it before they, whatever they do, dump it down in quarry or whatever, but. It, he, you ought to see the trucks coming in here. It's awful. It's basically pumping mud on the side of the trucks to wash the trucks.
Is it recently or?
Yeah, it was yesterday, yesterday. So.
Years ago, there was when we had some of the rain events, it was pretty muddy.
Dumped down from the wash station, like it was really bad.
They told me that they had, they had an incident where a truck ran into the. Wash station. And damaged it, so they were trying to get it repaired. So they, they kind of blamed it on that.
Still a violation. Washing it all. Still violation of washing the trucks.
Well, they technically they are, but they're washing them with mud, like, you know, so I don't know.
I'm glad to be there.
Yeah.
Uh, I was gonna say, you know, separately too, I noticed, and it was within the last week, just, uh, I guess up near Meeting House Garage. Just the fading of the, the yellow line alone due to the dirt that I'm driving through and I saw two cars just completely over the line. I didn't, but they swerved back over. But yeah, that was something that I wanted to comment on since you brought it up. As well, it's, it, the road looks pretty terrible.
That subject. We just received a grant on Harley Grant to do. The bike lanes and incorporated with that. Uh, raised pavement markings and, you know, thermoplastic markings on Indian Creek Road at the quarry stretch where. And the problem with is, is, is all the dirt and all the sweeping. And the traditional paint painted pavement markings just don't last while we're incorporating that. Into this, uh, this Harley branch project, so we're hoping that gets done, should get done this year. The question then becomes do, you know, rather than putting a raised pavement markings in and then three years later do a resurfacing. So we're looking to moving that, that road up on the resurfacing schedule to this year to get it done. We've got a couple of options we could even, we could do through the Nova chip. For our contract with AMS, or we have an equipment rental contract through Saks where we would buy material and they would install it to do a traditional hot mix overlay. So we're looking at those options at this point to, uh. Uh, to, to take care of the road and then also then get the, all the raised pavement markings installed and all the, the new thermoplastic markings. So that we won't. Shouldn't have that issue moving forward. Uh, with the, you know, the lines disappearing, because yeah, it's around the edge of the bends. Especially in front of the quarry, there's, you know, the, the markings are all gone. Yeah, we're gone, so. Uh. Grants. Uh, received the scoping forms back from Penn Dot on the green light go. This is for the traffic signal upgrades. Main and Maple and Main and Huntsburger. They indicated no preference for which, which, uh, project, so we're gonna submit applications for both. See what happens.
Good.
Um, like I said, the Harley Grant, we, we received a little over eighty six thousand dollars for bike lanes, striping. Sidage and raised pavement markings. Uh, we're also looking into the, the COVID ARPA community facilities grant. It's a new program, uh, for the community center project. One of the challenges that we're gonna face with that is making the connection with. One of the requirements is that it's gotta be a direct impact from COVID. And, you know, the, the project has to be a result of, of COVID. So. You know, we, we attended a couple of webinars, well, it's, it's all ARPA money and it's all COVID related. So they're, they're making those, those distinctions in the, uh, qualifications for the, for the projects. But we attended a couple of webinars and, you know, there were a lot of people online, you know, throwing out suggestions about, you know, different projects and. You look at those and a new rule, you know, ADA improvements, you know, those kinds of things. I think everybody, because it's a new program, they're gonna have to wade through a lot of. Stuff that, you know, people are really stretching to make a connection and everybody's gonna try and, you know, spin their projects a little bit to, to see if they can, uh. You know, make those connections to, to satisfy those requirements of the grant, so. We're gonna listen to the same thing and see if we can, uh. Uh, find a couple of angles to, to make, make the connections on, on our project as well. Um, just some department activities, doing a lot of tree work, got a lot of site disdis issues. Some of it's on, uh, on state roads and thank you Tom and your staff for the assistance. It's. It's amazing that, you know, we set up traffic controls, the work zones. And, you know, people just become so accustomed and don't even pay attention. Put a police car there with the, the red and blue lights and everybody slows down to airspeed and they were traveling, so. Uh, but we appreciate the assistance. It, it really makes for a safer environment for, for my guys to, to work in. Uh, just a tree work at Roth Park to make room for a new fence there. Also looking at, uh, creating additional like five parking spots there. They're basically back up to the Harley'sville Hotel, that, that portion of it, because they use the parking, they use the grass anyway to park, so. And what's happening is that with the old post and rail fence, it was so close to the parking lot, even though we had parking bumpers. When trucks back in, they're not hitting the parking bumpers, they're hitting the fence. Moving the fence back and then gonna install, uh, you know, parking spaces there, so. Um, otherwise just do a lot of sign work, trying to get caught up on all that, that stuff, so that's about it for my update.
I wanted to thank you again for, uh, getting back at me so quick about that store road three that fell.
Oh.
Because I had a lot of people calling me like, what's going on? Why is it sitting? So thank you.
Yeah, that was a little bit of a, a mess, because Pico was out there on Friday right after it happened.
Yeah.
Stored power and then they came back out on Monday and started the guy, but. They never reinstated the neutral line on the, between the poles or anything, so.
Yeah.
He said, you know, he was scratching his head as to wondering what was going on there, but. Uh, we made it safe. It was safe for us to go in tree, so we were tree and allowed everybody to get in there and do their work, so. So. That's all that I have. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
I, I, this question, just a comment, though, good. Thank you again to you and your crew, and I'm sure everybody shares your sentiments, this weather, you know, keeping roads safe and, uh. It's been a little bit since we had, uh, that much work, but did a great job and everybody does a great job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Uh, briefly, um, I mentioned last work session that we had some miscellaneous tires that were parked at our vehicles. Uh, and they are up on municipal. Uh, they're gonna be up for a couple more weeks, uh, it's. Monday the nineteenth, we'll close out in time for our next work session. Uh, personnel side, we still have one officer on modified duty, but non-work related, uh, shore repair. Uh, later this week, uh, we'll get a. Runner decision whether he has to go. And turn a full duty. And if he does, then we can get our second traffic officer back on, but regular rotation. So I have.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief?
Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Beaky.
Thank you, Mr. German. So this month or our last month, we had one firm that was with you, which is free on park or danger. It's your upcoming meeting tomorrow, you'll be looking at the ARO Residential Office District ordinance amendments for consideration to adopt. Also, you'll be looking at the sign ordinance amendments with, with primarily addressed the Bury Vineage in Township. And so that would be a authorization to advertise. The upcoming planning commission meeting that we're going to be having in. On February twenty eighth, we'll be looking at, uh, well, the letter on feasibility study. So we're nearing the end of that process, so they have a draft report they're gonna be presenting to the. Uh, to you and to the planning officials, so the planning officials. Also have one ninety six Main Street coming because they submitted a revised conditional use plan. For the, for the bank and the retail markets all to get. That would be the, the conditional use applications that's on the agenda. And since it's the winter, we're able to take a look at other ordinance amendments, so we're bringing back that thing off the. Stormwater management ordinance that we're taking a look at. Um, that one is regarding. The, the maximum allowable. Stormwater, I'm sorry, the maximum requires stormwater management that is required for developers when they're doing subdivision lane developments. Right now, it's not one hundred percent of the impervious surface would be allowed on the property. It's, it, it, actually, I, I don't think it's necessarily default, and so we're clarifying ordinance to require that the developer. Do the stormwater management for a hundred percent of the impervious surface that would be proposed, even if they're not proposing one hundred percent. So we're clarifying that, also a part ordinance amendment and the quarrel communication facilities ordinance. Uh, so just cleaning up those ordinances, so, so we'll put those in front of you shortly. There is no zoning hearing board application for this one. That's all I have.
Terrific. Any questions for Mike?
Oh, go ahead, sir. I have this one question on the sign, I was just flipping it over and, uh, I'll show you guys. Section three. Part fifteen, the signs that vivid statements, words, pictures of a scene of obscene or pornographic subjects as determined by the Lord's South Township. I was just curious what the county model has, because for me, you know, and I know we discussed this before, like. One, the infection three, which, uh, fifteen. For me, I, I just don't know what would determine something obscene, because I mean, when it comes to freedom, each one person's upset and he might be somebody else.
Harry Block.
Yeah, I don't. Serious, I'm scared of the model, but I know part of the reason why we're getting rid of political science, because that is freedom. People can express different things. I have no problem. Somebody putting up something, whether I agree with it or not, I can regulate, we can regulate maybe the height and the size, but. If this, it just seems really fine line of who's gonna determine, oh, I don't like that statement. Obviously, some things that would find seem with majority of people, but. I was just curious what your mom will ask for that, what anybody saw, and that might be, that could put us in an interesting situation.
We have Sister Mary Catherine payroll.
Yeah, the board of three religious leaders and, uh, it's a very good question.
Anything contentious that are questionable? It, it won't, if the decision won't come from me. Because if it is a bad situation, I don't run out there full of sign ritual violation. I consult that, so I. All. Look at this. Interpretation. That's important for me, maybe.
But, but I, I, I appreciate that answer. I can probably go along with, you know, with Kevin though. Exit. It does, it gets a slippery slope with regards to, uh. What is that? What you allow?
What you allow, what you don't allow, and, um, yeah, that's. A, uh. That's a tough one. It's, it's interesting. And like I said, there might be, if I see something my neighbor may have that I might find offensive, you know, I could talk to my kids about it, but that gives them me to write it for something up. As well, so I guess.
If that, that language comes out of the county model.
That's why I was curious where you're coming from, because.
That, so it's a county model to just write that and then fill in municipality, you said municipality, right?
So what, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with what's the consternation with fifteen? Signs that exhibit statements, words, or pictures of obscene or pornographic subjects as determined by the Lord's of that.
With pornographics probably fairly.
I would think.
Seeing maybe less so. Okay. Depending on what you consider obscene. And what shocks your conscience versus mine.
Right, but it's, it's not, not necessarily, doesn't.
Something that I have.
Controversial.
What'd you say?
Uh, it doesn't say things that are controversial, it just says obscene or pornographic, so. To me, that language is pretty clear, pretty clear. But I guess you're suggesting that there may be. A gray area there?
I, I'm not seeing the gray.
I was just wanted to have discussion again. I'm not sure if that would lead to a gray area, because again, it's, it's a matter of ten years in certain place. I don't know.
I'm not sure that it is.
Well, if, if, if someone had a, uh, sign in their front yard. That said. The F word Trump.
Right.
Would that meet the definition of obscene as, uh, determined by our township staff?
Uh, so you'd have to, that's, and Mike's point's well taken, right? You would take that to the solicitor and determine whether that's something we're gonna pursue and to the extent that we are, then, you know. Be back to Mike to write a violation or what have, so I don't, I, I mean, this comes down to enforcement. Yeah, exactly, and it allows, it allows for just that conversation to occur. Where, so what's the alternative? We're gonna take this out?
Okay. And you'd have to list everything that he would, right? So that I see your, it's troubling.
For that's the, the, the troubling side is any freedom of expression discussion has exactly this. This merit to it of. How far do you go one way or the other to protect the, the public over the?
I think you're can, maybe conflating the two, right? Freedom of expression and something that's obscene or pornographic. These are two very specific.
Pornographic, I, obscene is where I think I'm more, uh. It's the statements and the words too, that could be different. I mean, in the past, we had a signage that I know there was, you know, people were upset about it. A lot of people actually literally said to me, you guys know, with me, the paper. We made a statement, people said, well, I, you know, don't you want to take it down? No, whether I agree with it or not.
It was neither obscene nor pornographic.
Okay, that would be determined, though. I guess rude. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I. It's just a, uh, it can be a slippery slope though, where I think we are a group of reasonably minded people sitting on this board and with this current staff that is not always the same group that may possibly sit here.
True. Well, you're still stuck with obscene or pornographic. It doesn't say objectionable, it doesn't say, you know, we don't like it, you know, there's, all that's taken out. I, I, I personally am fine with that language. But. You know, if you, if you folks feel there's a gray there, then maybe, maybe there's, maybe you take out obscene, I don't.
Mike, did these solicitors review the line?
That's correct, yeah. And that's why I was just curious what the, I did read that, I know we talked.
Well, you're. Well, I'm not, because we can make a determination.
Right.
On a case by case basis.
Well, I think.
List everything, somebody.
No, I agree with you. Can't list it, it just be, it's, you know. Yeah.
They're trying to cover all bases, so. And then we'll figure it out from there. Basis covered.
I mean, until some other, you know, legal precedents.
True.
Can, you know, move them along, I just want to get, doesn't feel uncomfortable with that base, current legal precedent.
Right.
But again, if this kind of issue came up, we would be consulting the solicitor, so I would hopefully be find out the latest.
And, and to be frank, I couldn't think of any better license itself. That's why I was curious if there was something else or if we haven't discussed, or. Do we take it out altogether? It's, it's a fun one. I agree where it comes, but even with the images, it's, it's hard to say, like, obviously, I think we're all in agreement what pornographic would be, but. And you don't want to tell someone, you know, it's, it's tough. Words, statements, though, it's hard.
Well, the good news is tomorrow night, we're gonna authorize that.
It's in what, in a site? Right. Well, we, unfortunately, the definition of obscene doesn't give you a whole lot more direction because it's offensive or disgusting by accepted standards of morality and decency. That changes obviously.
Is always moral?
And exactly, exactly, so.
All right. Any, anything else for, uh, assigned ordinance for Michael? All right, moving right along, you can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on the manager's report review. January second, twenty twenty four. Reorganization meeting minutes, but you have any questions, concerns?
Wondering if I could add my statement that I had last time, just prepared to adapt, preparing for. Doesn't pass. I can email the, for nine, but see.
That wasn't for that meeting. Was that the rework? We can do everything at one time, didn't we? It was so long ago. I think it's.
That's, that's all.
Next item is the review of the agenda for tomorrow evening.
Um, okay, that's, that's great. If that gets done as in the minute you note his statement is attached, or do you actually feed the statement directly into?
We usually attach it. Even they've attached, they will attach the per. Since I've been here, it's been others.
No, no, that's fine. I just wanted, I didn't remember how he did it, if it got inserted in the body or if it was.
Very good. No worries. I. Unfinished business as, uh, Mr. Beaky reviewed the ordinance twenty twenty four oh one residential office district amendment is on the board's. Consideration to adopt. The new business ordinance twenty twenty four oh two sign ordinance amendment.
Which was good. Question specifically twenty twenty four oh two. On the minutes, we have twenty four oh two resolution, amended establishing fee. I just wanted to make sure we have the correct resolution numbers on the agenda.
What's that?
In our previous minutes, we had twenty twenty four oh two as resolution, commending and establishing the fee for certain services.
This is for an ordinance.
Just one, a resolution, yeah, that's all I know, I had to make sure, thank you.
Uh, resolutions, so side ordinance amendment. Authorization to advertise, that'd be ordinance twenty twenty four oh two. Uh, resolution twenty twenty four oh four adopting the sewage facilities plan revision. This is, uh. Put forth by the, uh, authority, uh, revision to the Act five thirty seven plan, uh. Has been reviewed by the planning commission and they're looking for.
For where, for what area? Uh, just for the pump station work or what?
I believe, I believe so, yes.
You know, there.
And some people had, they. Went to the revision for their half to add. The very, very.
Okay, I knew you guys were doing some more master planning, we're not.
Resolution twenty twenty four oh five authorized information or grant page the twenty twenty four round of the barcode twenty forty and paving grant program. This would be for the Yoda Road sidewalk project. Uh, as Mr. Jones previously discussed, a twenty twenty four by two minutes pavement repair, base repair contract. Authorization to advertise twenty twenty four pavement parking marks contract, uh, with Franconia Township, also authorization to advertise.
Uh, quick, just to speak of sewage planning, we heard anything more on the one for? Uh. Big love, thank you. No, thank you. Haven't heard back from that, that was.
No.
Good. That's all I have. Um, quick question also, obviously Doug had mentioned a number of brands we're going after more, and I know we had put in the budget for additional staffing, uh, special products toward here, I think it's only, how's that?
Probably, probably I'll be sitting down, going through a, a job description and then getting that out.
That'll be very helpful, I think.
Yeah, they seem to pile up.
Well, it's lots of good works to do, it's just a matter of the amount of time on a given day to get there.
True. Anything else for, uh, for Joe? Do we have need? Do we have need for executive session today?
Not.
Very good. Any other uh public comment? Nothing today? All right, well, I guess that would motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.